All right. Benton County Commission down center.
Commissioner Frazier, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Be glad to. Bow with me. My special lady Father, we're coming this evening to do the county's business, Lord. Lord, I ask that you be with our citizens, I ask that you be with our commissioners, and Lord, I ask that you be with our country in these times. These things I ask in your son's precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Hahn, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Roll call. Dwayne Fowler.
Present.
Do you not have your tablet, Mr. Fowler?
No, ma'am, I apologize.
That's okay.
I was pushed, I was pushed for time. I apologize.
We'll know then that you'll have to vote.
Mr. Hocken?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Plank, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
You're the keeper of my breath.
One absent.
Fifteen present, three absent.
Well, one absent, two. Fifteen present and one absent. Okay, we do have a form. Next, before we go to the nomination of the first and third district, our Mayor Shannon has some awards that he would like to present.
As we all know, the Waverly flood was an unprecedented event in our community, certainly impacting the Humphreys County area for years to come now. When the call came out for people to respond, Benton County did what it always does, responded in kind. We were very blessed to have a presence over there that we did. We were very privileged to have so many fine men and women representing us, trying to do what was right for the fellow citizens. In the midst of this event, because of the horrific amount of floodwaters that came, it changed, it wasn't just regular waters. The people that were there told me that this was a torrential time. And in the fact that it was so perilous, just going over there and trying to save lives in boats was, you'd think it's water, it's a boat, it's safe, but it isn't. It was rapid water. And these gentlemen that we're about to give a plaque of appreciation to came in and risked their lives to save others. And that is the highest calling that anybody is willing to do, is to lay down your life for another and certainly put yourself in peril's way to save those who are in need. And with no thought or recognition of themselves, the time had come, they hopped in the boat and went and did their job. As a result of what they did, a lot, lives were saved, and also they themselves were put in jeopardy and were unable to be retrieved for over three hours. In fact, at some point or another, Sheriff Christopher told me he thought they were dead. And so, we're so thankful that they were not dead. We're thankful for their valor and for their bravery. And I would like to ask each and every one to come forward this evening so that we can recognize them and give them a much-needed applause for the work that they've done. Gentlemen, would you please come forward? I'll read the first plaque. All three are the same, other than their names. And it says, "With our deepest appreciation, we hereby honor Officer Billy Brown for his bravery and selflessness during the August 21st flood in Waverly, Tennessee. Disregarding his own safety, he was instrumental in the rescue and search during the floodwaters. With steadfast dedication, he took part in the recovery of victims in this tragic event. This officer has exemplified the high ideals of all first responders." And we want to present this with our thanks to Officer Billy Brown.
Thanks, sir.
It is also a great pride that I present to Sergeant Ken Frye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And last, and certainly not least, is Chief Deputy Jason Lowery. Thank you. Thank you, each and every one. Sheriff Christopher, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Mine will be very short. I would like to say this. I never doubted him before. It's a great honor that we're doing this tonight. I work with the finest, and Benton County can be proud of them. As I said, I never doubted him before. But these guys, we thought they was gone, and we didn't know how to get to them, but they never hesitated a second. And I believe if we called on them in Benton County or anywhere else to do it, they'd be there again. So, guys, I love you, thank you for what you do.
I ask you to take your vote.
Okay. Well, I should tell you the same thing.
Number one on our agenda tonight is the nomination of first and third district commissioners. So, we're going to do the first district first. So, anyone that's here from the first district that wants to be considered for the seat, will you come forth, please? I'll let each one of you introduce yourselves, okay?
All right. I'm Stephen Stokes, I'm from the first district. First, I want to begin with my condolences. Mr. Patton, I've known him for almost 20 years, and I know that he's a man of integrity, and I'm so sorry for your loss. I served on the county commission from 2004 to 2010. Served on the budget committee at some, at some point. Other committees such as the highway and the senior citizens, and really enjoyed my tenure there. The main reason I chose to run is because I'm an educator. And we educate our children, and so many of them have decided to, to leave Benton County with their great education and seek another place to live where they can make a better living. That is still the reason that I'm seeking the spot now. I considered to run back in 18, and I did not do that. I do plan on running in 2022. I also know that after attending last week's meetings and listening to your questions and your dialogue between all of you on those committees, I regret not running. Because you all are very responsible stewards with the resources that we have in this county. Without being, anything else being said, I just wish to be a part of this team. So, your consideration is appreciated.
Does anyone have any questions that they'd like to ask? Mr. Stokes? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'm James Piercy. I live in District One, corner Eagle Creek Road and Birdsong Road. One of my neighbors approached me and told me about Mr. Patton passing, said I should run. I promptly said, "Well, no. I don't have that much experience with county business." He said, "Well, pray about it and get back to us." So, I did. And one day, I went and had lunch and ran into Eddie Rochelle over at Waverly Exit. He's in Humphreys County. And I mentioned it to him, and he said, "Well, I've only been a commissioner 16 years." He said, "Yeah, that's something you could do." And when I got back, I called Trey Smith on an unrelated thing. And I mentioned it to him. I asked him about one of his projects. And he said, "Yeah, that was my position before Mr. Patton." I talked to one or two others, I talked to Buck, I talked to Norman and a few others. They all said the same thing. "That's something you can do." And fine and good, if you so choose. I'll, I'll commit to a year. I'll be here, I'll show up and learn about procedures that you have to do business. I'm a retired contractor, residential, commercial, much like Trey. I did steel buildings all over the place. I had to pull building permits. I had to deal with planning commissions, codes, insurance, I mean, you name it. I mean, I was responsible for all things. And I know a little bit about what that's like. My best customers, probably TVA, TWRA. I came out of retirement and did a really nice building for them at Humboldt Lake here just two, three years ago. But I learned a little bit how to get through all of that process to pull us, do business for the state of Tennessee. TVA was especially challenging. You learn a little bit about OSHA. And hey, are you qualified to use that ladder? Things that you, you wouldn't expect. But if you so choose, I'd be happy to come in and do proper business. My church affiliation, the Eagle Creek Baptist Church. So many churches struggling now. But on Wednesday night, they don't have a ceremony. I'm so proud of them. They come in to the cafeteria and put their books down on the table, and they talk about what's imported. And I've been taught that all my life. Small farm I grew up on, we did our business at the table. We used our best manners when we talked about what's imported. And I would be happy to participate. Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Piercy.
I did, I did. Now, arguably, he had had some of the best catfish around here. And he had a serious heart attack, you may know.
Do you know Miss Stella Land? Miss Stella Land, Joe Land, you know them two?
I don't. I know they're good people, and some of the problems we're facing here in this county, where I live, there's, I have heard, if I've heard correctly, they're dividing off one-third acre lots for sale in southernmost Benton County. That's something that I, I see, and it's something that probably should be addressed. Those people live in a world of hurt. And they will never legally live in those places. It's a complex issue, and I think it's something we should, we should see.
Does anyone have any questions? Any, Mr. Piercy? Okay, if not, then at this time, we're going to go ahead and we're going to vote for the first one. Oh, okay, well, I didn't see him stand up all ago. I'm sorry.
My name is Jeff Solomon. I'm a small business owner. I live up there in Holiday. I don't know if a commissioner would be right for me or not. I'm all about promoting small business, getting it out there, you know, bettering our community, bringing jobs and all. I don't know if I could make a difference as commissioner, but I mean, that's pretty much who I am, all about small business. So, if commissioner was right for me, I'd be willing to try to fill the shoes of him. And that's about it.
Okay.
Jeff, what about the, I'm the first district commissioner. What plan, I don't have that issue with your surrounding of your building up there. If you talk with your neighbors, can you tell them about that deal, if you like?
It's still an unresolved issue. It's an ongoing issue.
I've been several calls.
Oh, I'm sure there've been, been a lot of calls about it. And it's been a sore spot for, for me and my business, my neighbors, and it's unfortunate. But I mean, you know, sometimes you just deal with what you, what you've got. So.
Any other questions for Mr. Solomon? Commissioner Hill?
Sir, do you mind me asking what business you have?
We do automotive and heavy diesel mechanical repair. We specialize pretty much right up and down the corridor between Nashville and Memphis on Interstate 40. We take care of the commercial traffic and also some, you know, non-commercial things, busted tires, blown engines, radiators, things of that nature. That's the business that I brought into the county. I have employed, I've been here probably three or four years. I've employed probably five or six different people from the community. There again, like any other small business, I cannot find and keep help. I don't know what to do about that.
I don't think anybody does.
I mean, I don't know if, you know, stepping into the commissioner role, I don't know if anything can be done to alleviate that. I don't know. All I know is I'm a small business person from this, from this county, where they live in this county. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, at this time, we're going to do.
One more. I would like to be nominated, I would like to nominate myself. Is that all right?
It sure is. Come on up and introduce yourself.
Pardon the slippers. Good evening, my name is Bonnie Evans. I live in the first district. And I would like to serve in Don Patton's role for the remainder of his term, simply because I want to serve the people. And I think that there are good people, we have good commissioners here who want to do the right thing. As a citizen, I'm not personally asked enough what I would like to see happen with our county. And I don't know too many people who are. So, I, while I honor the vision of the person who's in charge, that vision has to come from we, the people. And I would like to see that put back into place at some point. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Ms. Evans?
I would like to ask her to stay the job while she actually does. I know, but a lot of them don't know that you're a veteran.
I'm the veteran service officer for the county.
Done a great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I will second that, because she does an exceptional job. She's a very caring individual.
Thank you, Mayor.
If not, then I will ask, is there anybody else from out there that we didn't know about? Okay, it looks like there's not. So, we're going to go ahead and have roll call vote for the first district. And then we will wait until after we elect the second commis, district commissioner, and then we'll take a five-minute recess and let them be sworn in, and then we'll go on with the agenda. So, is there anyone here, I know there is, from the third district? Come forward and introduce yourself, both of you, please.
All right. My name's Adam Reed. I talked to about half of y'all today, and for the other half, I did try to call you. I know things get busy, so, I know when I see, I get so many calls now. If I see a number I don't recognize, I don't answer it because it's usually spam. But I am from the Reed Furniture Bunch. I'm the middle son that usually goes under the radar that nobody really knows about. I grew up, well, we moved to Benton County when I was about three years old. I've grown up in Benton County my entire life. Grew up, just, just, my dad did good in raising us to work. I think that's the best thing he's ever done for me. So, I grew up building houses with Todd Prince and Sean Leonard before he passed away. I went and got my engineering, my mechanical engineering degree at UT Martin. And since then, I've worked at Palmer Tool for six years, and now I'm over at OxyChem, I've been there for about four years. I really feel like I have a strong background for this position because I grew up working in a privately-owned small business, my dad, so I know the needs of that metric of the county. And I've also been employed by corporate America, OxyChem. And right now, my job there is a project manager, so I manage several multimillion-dollar projects, have to set budget for them, deal with contractors, and so I've got a good grasp for what the reality of pricing is and when they're blowing smoke, when they're not, and whatnot. I have nothing personal to gain from this. I would much rather be at home with my, my wife and my kids, but they're the reason I'm up here. My wife's Michaela, my daughter Ellie, three years old, my son Isaac, one-year-old, and Peanut, we call him because we don't know where he is yet, but he's on the way. I say he, so maybe he's a he, I don't know. But that's the reason I'm here. I want them to have a, you know, I grew up in this county, I loved it, it was good to me. I want it to continue to be good for my kids. I want to make sure the right decisions are made, and I feel like I've got a good, strong background for that. And I'm also hoping to motivate some of my generation to start stepping in here and learning from, from you, some of you that have experienced before y'all are all gone. And we, we just have a void there, we need good people, and we need, my generation especially seems to have kind of abandoned our government responsibilities, and, and that's detrimental to any society. My ultimate goal here is to represent the people of the third district of Benton County and to voice and vote the will of the people to the best of my abilities so long as it doesn't violate any of my biblical or moral principles. So, I'd like to ask for your votes as well, your guidance, and I appreciate your time and your service as well.
Any questions for Mr. Reed?
All right, thank y'all.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the commissioners for the job they do, the time diligence they put in. I know the county job is sometimes thankless, and it means a lot sometimes just somebody says, "Y'all, thank you." My name is Brett Burke, I'm married to Lee Amber. I'm a member of Missionary Grove Baptist Church. Very happy. Recently retired from Benton County electric for 43 years of service. And I have been all over this county, on every road in the county. And I believe I have a feeling of what the county needs. I've talked to people in all ends of the county, all parts. I've talked to people that live in the county, have born and raised here. I've talked to camp people that's moved in here with businesses. And I have, you know, negotiated with them and got them in here and tried to, tried to make them feel welcome here. Going over my notes here. Well, I don't know. I've had a good working relationship with the sheriff's department, the school board, the highway department, state and local, I've worked with them. Of course, the electric system too. And I, I just feel that my experience to the, with the county and being part of the county for 43 years, that I could, that I could help the county, and I, as part of the electric system, I was manager of operations and engineering for 15 years. So, I have worked with county budgets, and I know how that is. And we have stayed within them. And that's hard, that's hard to do sometimes, but sometimes it hurts. But anyway, I'd like to be the commissioner of the third district, if y'all see fit.
I'll have to interview him on the next.
Any questions for Mr. Burke? Okay. We're going to take a roll call vote for the first district. When Madam Clerk calls your name, state the full name of the person you're voting for.
Can you give us the full names again for?
In the first district, we have James Piercy, Stephen Stokes, Jeff Solomon, and Bonnie Evans.
All good candidates. Put our hands over the head.
I'm sorry, what was Mr. Solomon's first name again?
Jeff.
Jeff, thank you.
Okay. Is everybody ready for roll call vote? Roll call, please. Diana Ferguson.
Peter Stokes.
Kenneth Miller.
Pass.
Rocky Preston. Norman Frazier.
Stokes.
Gary Farr.
I guess.
Sonny Hall.
Stephen Stokes.
Bill Melton.
Stephen Stokes.
Rochelle Hill.
James Piercy.
Mike Nunnery.
Stokes.
Roseanne Ward. Stephen Stokes. Darryl Hicks.
Bonnie Evans.
Ronnie Hopper.
Bonnie Evans.
Terry Keaton.
Stokes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
I need to vote.
Oh, sorry. That's what I'm going to go, sorry.
Pressure's on.
Amy Carr. They changed the roll call, it's all right. Ward Clamp?
I wanted to give it to Mrs. Evans, she's asked me six months ago, I guess, since they've come up, so I'm gonna vote for Bonnie.
Does anyone else wish to change their vote? Kenneth Miller, would you like to change yours?
No.
Gary Farr?
No.
Eight Stokes. One Piercy. Three Evans. Two pass. That has my Stokes, we've got a votes.
Wanda?
Are we not missing one?
Be me.
Yeah, we're missing. Did I not call your name?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I apologize because I was ready to go with the first district like we did, and I'm sorry, y'all. That's okay. I just knew I had a count of only 15. I did. Dwayne, I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
If I miss somebody on a time like this with the way we do, just a push button, it really throws it off the way they wanted to do it tonight. I'm sorry, Dwayne.
Oh, that's fine, I'm sure.
Okay, Dwayne Fowler.
Stokes.
I'm sorry. So, it's not, I'm sorry. That's okay. Dwayne, what do you have?
I have nine Stokes, one Piercy, three Evans, two pass.
Okay, nine, one, three, two. Okay, I'm sorry, we have nine Stokes, one Piercy, three Evans, and two pass. So, tonight, since our body was a 16-member body, the majority vote is nine. So, Mr. Stokes got the nine.
So, Mr. Stokes got the nine vote, so he'll be our new commissioner in the first. And now, we're going to vote for the second district, I mean, third. Same thing, when she calls your name, just repeat the name that you're voting for. We have two, we have Brett Burke and Adam Reed. Okay?
Dana Ferguson, Brett Burke. Kenneth Miller.
Adam Reed.
Norman Fraser.
Burke.
Gary Farr.
Burke.
Dwayne Fowler.
I'm a pass.
Sonny Hall.
Brett Burke.
Bill Melton.
Burke.
Rochelle Hill.
Adam Reed.
Mike Nunnery.
Brett Burke.
Roseanne Ward.
Adam Reed.
Darryl Hicks.
Adam Reed.
Ronnie Hopper.
Reed, Adam Reed.
Terry King.
Adam Reed.
Angie Kerr.
Adam Reed.
Ward Plant.
Brett Burke.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
I need to ask Dwayne.
That's my last.
I pass, yes. Both great candidates, I just, just hardly been called, and I apologize.
I've got seven, seven, and one pass, so it's a tie.
We're not missing one again, that's only fifteen votes.
I got fifteen.
And Rocky would be sixteen, perhaps, okay. Well, in this case, we don't have any person with nine votes. So, what we'll do is, we'll, next month, we'll come back and we'll vote again for a commissioner for the third district. As of now, that seat's still vacant.
What was the vote count?
Seven, seven.
One pass.
Seven, two.
And it takes nine.
Nine.
It wouldn't take nine to nine, would it? We just got fifteen commissioners here, ain't we?
Well, we've got a sixteen-member body until we swear in a new commissioner.
Okay, gotcha.
Does anybody want to change their vote?
Since nobody, yeah, since nobody changed their vote, then we're, we're stuck with the tie?
You could swear in Mr. Stokes.
Pardon me?
You could swear in Mr. Stokes.
Yes, we're gonna do that, I'm talking about the third district, we had a tie.
You could swear him in and then let him vote.
Um, Ms. Jones, even if we did that, it wouldn't change the vote because we, we have to have nine. So, it wouldn't help us any tonight to do it that way.
Unless he's sworn in, it takes ten, will it take ten or nine still? It's gonna be seventeen, it's gonna still be nine.
Still be nine. So, at this time, we're gonna take, I'm going to declare the third seat still vacant. It's open to anyone next month that wants to come up. It doesn't have to be limited to just the two that was here tonight. So, that seat is still vacant. We'll announce that in the paper again, and we'll vote again next month. So, right now, we're gonna take a five-minute recess and swear in Mr. Stokes. The mayor's gonna swear you in, Stephen. Mr.? Angela will want to get a picture of this, I'm sure.
I do solemnly swear that I will perform with fidelity the duties of the office to which I have been elected and which I am about to assume. I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution, the United States, and faithfully represent the First District of Benton County. And then we'll take the picture. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, table. Before we're serving.
Hey, Tommy. I am. No, I, I came. That's okay, you can read it. Okay, this is the rehearsal house, and we're gonna have three thousand twenty-five dollars. And this is gonna be the whole.
Please say. Burke, you're gonna need more in the pack?
We don't have commissioners late for the night, or what?
They've all gone to Congress.
Okay.
I'll lay this charge at arms, I'll give it.
Sorry, me and the Coke machine had a disagreement, I won.
Okay, hold on. I had a disagreement with it over water, too. It's like, it took me fifteen minutes to get a bottle of water.
Go for it, but you said, the machines trying to get those rates.
Alright, I guess, how it took.
Is there any?
There's not any of this. I, I'm still going to ask though. Okay, now, we're back in session. Number two is approval of the agenda. We need a motion and a second.
Make a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any discussion about the agenda? Not, um, please vote.
We can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Okay, next is the citizens' forum. Is there any citizen here that would like to come up? It doesn't look like it. Commissioners' forum? Any commissioner want to talk this time? Okay, next is number five, our county mayor.
Moving pretty quickly. I want to take a moment and declare, uh, as we've had run in the paper, that this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. My mask is purple in respect to that. Um, Tennessee has remained in the top ten for domestic homicides since two thousand and one. Tennessee reported ninety victims murdered by intimate partner in two thousand and twenty. Sixty-nine thousand three hundred eighty-five incidents of domestic violence were reported in Tennessee, and fifty-seven point seven percent of domestic violence cases were cleared by arrests or by exceptional means in two thousand and twenty. We could go through and continue reading all of the horrific statistics that are available, that you see in your packet on this proclamation. This is a, a real problem, and it is by bringing awareness to it and by promoting advocacy groups like the RAP program in Benton County that we can help to curb this and to reduce this to a nonexistent level. And so, working together, all of us can make a positive impact in reducing domestic violence. As you may be aware, there is a concert, a RAP concert, coming up at the end of the month. You can see that on many social media posts, uh, so that you may want to check that out. It's gonna be here at the Court Square, Levon is gonna be performing. There's gonna be guest speakers coming. There's gonna be a Walk for Awareness, and that is a, a community activity that we couldn't be prouder to have coming to the Court Square and to support. And so, I'm thankful for the efforts of so many different people. If you send code to me, uh, one, who have done such a remarkable job in continuing to make us aware of domestic violence. And so, I, I proudly sign with Mayor Camden, uh, Mr. Cappack, uh, this proclamation declaring it Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I hope that we each continue to do our part to reduce this terrible tragedy in our community, in our state, and in our nation. Thank you. Now, as far as other things that we have going on, I also want to tell you that we have Halloween on the square, October twenty-fifth. Um, I'll be going as Al on Tool Time, in case you didn't know. It's a cheap mask. Um, so that's, for the first time in many, many years, I'm gonna be putting on a flannel shirt, and I'm gonna have my tool belt on, and so I will be him proudly handing out candy. So, please, come on up, I see some of you have worn your mask tonight as well. So, if you will come on up and you'll get some candy. Halloween on the square, Monday, October the twenty-fifth. You see in your packet, but I want to point it out specifically, that we were very successful in our land sale. We, uh, have appropriated for the county two hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars that, uh, we made from the sale of that land. All of that land now is being returned back to the community as soon as we get all of the deeds that need to be done. Whitworth Law Firm, who is the tax attorney for the county, is preparing those deeds. We will be getting them out to the individuals, and then they will be, uh, pro-rated taxes that will be due and payable. So, these parcels will hopefully begin generating taxes on an ongoing basis. As some of them are developed, they will begin developing even more and more taxes. So, we're, it's a win-win and all the way around for us in Benton County. So, we're very proud of the amount of money. Again, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, or as I like to say it, that's a quarter of a million dollars. So, that's a lot of money. You've heard a lot about ARCA. We have two grants that are coming into Benton County. Both are in excess of multiple millions of dollars. We have a basic grant that's coming in for three point one million, and some change. And we also have a water and sewer grant that's coming in for three point nine million. Now, um, the, the water and sewer grant requires a match to, uh, to pull down that money. So, I'm already working with the city of Big Sandy and the city of Camden, um, and to see what their needs may be. And we're also trying to maximize our dollars by, uh, working with the sewer district in the, uh, south end of the county, and the water district in the south end of the county to continue to provide and enhance all of those services that we have there. And Mr. Plant is on the, um, sewer board there, and he and I have already had a discussion. He had a meeting with his, uh, committee that, uh, and hopefully they'll be giving us some information. And Decatur County will hopefully pitch in and make this a much, uh, because this is probably once-in-a-lifetime money, and maybe we can make the most of it to benefit all of Benton County, not just one area. Uh, we are doing some work at the, we've received a tourism grant of about seventy-five thousand dollars with Mayor Lachlan. Uh, he was able to secure that for a, an amphitheater at the Patsy Cline Memorial. I don't know that we can actually get to the amphitheater stage if that, uh, we aren't developing it, and looking at a multi-phase approach. I've worked, uh, spoken with the state to, to look at a multi-phase approach to building that out over the next several years. But while we were out there, we found that there were some hornets, um, and, uh, I wanted just a shout-out to, um, Mr. Brad Hager, Pet Stop, uh, Pest Stop. He went out and freed dogs. He eradicated the hornet's force. So thank you, Mr. Hedge, for your continued service. And if you're out in that area and you see they're drilling samples and whatnot, it is for a multi-year project in which we will be asking the state for grants and help to build an outdoor amphitheater there to really revitalize that area for more of a tourist attraction, to put that in place to help tourism in Benton County. You'll hear more about that as we have the plans developed and all that. We have entered into a joint venture with the Industrial Board to hire an economic director. I'm using the money that has been appropriated for the tourism director. So you see that come out of the paper for the next two weeks, and then we're going to be hiring. The Industrial Board has agreed to pay half of the salary up to an amount, and we'll be paying half again out of the money that's already been appropriated for the tourism director that we no longer have here. So no additional money will be needed. This person we target will be tasked with getting our sites developed like it's supposed to be, making contact with the state for economic development enhancement, and to be doing what every other county around us is doing. And we need to be on that train as well, doing the very same thing. So I'm proud to be working with that, and I would value your input on if you want to be part of the interview process. The Industrial Board and I, any one of you that'd like to be there would be conducting interviews later on after the application process is over. As I've already talked to some of you about this, but the sheriff's bid for the fencing to be increased, three thousand twenty-five dollars to bring it full and compliant with what we, there were some changes, modifications that were made after the bids were accepted that need to be taken care of. Some have asked why it costs so much. Everything costs so much now. We can't go back in time to previous, previous money. I wish we could. I wish we could hop back to post, pre-COVID times. Also, we're getting an enhanced steel, or whatever it is that they make the fencing out of, that's military grade, you know, for security measures and all that. So when you see it, it's also going to encapsulate the entire back of the sheriff's office department so that he can run the impound lot, secure material for, we receive, the sheriff's primary responsibility is to serve the courts. And so, he has a responsibility to take evidence in, possession. Sometimes there's liens against property that he has to take and seize, and that needs to be protected. And so that's part of this entire process, including the impound lot. I'm also pleased to say that this money is coming from the litigation fees that are paid by people using the court system. This is not property taxes that are being spent. So property taxes for the community is not being spent at all. This is just litigation fee money that can only be spent by law on the sheriff's department or the courthouse. Also, the sheriff and I have worked out an agreement where he's going to give us half of his impound lot fees until it's payback. So this is a win-win for the community. And so I'm very pleased that we'll be able to start this, hopefully pass the resolution tomorrow, that we'll be able to get this out and be able to see good things start coming from that. On November fifteenth, that's going to be our next county commission meeting. I want to do something a little different at particular meeting. I'm asking you to come for a non-official meeting at 5:00 PM. I would like to host you to provide, and I'm going to ask other people to come, and we've got some other guests that will be coming to have some desserts, holiday-themed desserts for the Thanksgiving holidays. So if you'd like to be here at 5:00 o'clock, we're going to start that. If you don't, that's okay, too, I understand. But we're going to have lots of desserts here, probably some themed drinks and whatnot, and just a little something to make the holidays a bit more festive while we're coming. I also worked out, I had to go, sheriff and I had to go do a cake eating, not a cake eating contest, a cake judging contest. The sheriff beat me in the cake eating contest, my goodness. Now, I have to kid around with it. But we went to the Senior Citizen Center for a cake judging contest, and I asked those kind of people there. I said, would you do this for us in December? And so, December at 5:00 PM, you're also going to be invited for a Christmas-themed dessert, if you'd like to be up here for that. And we'll have that for you as well. So don't get too spoiled, I'm not going to do anything for January. But November, December, we're going to have you, if you'd like to be here at 5:00, I'd sure love to see you. And again, that's it, no cost to the committee, to the county, no cost to anybody. All that cost is being born by myself, and so we've got no problems there. We have a new airport director, if you haven't gone out to see him, Jimmy Trout is doing the fine job for us. He's a retired bowler maker. And he is a self-starter, as a lot of bowler makers are. We have our own, Mr. Preston here is a bowler maker, and we know that they have fine work ethic. So Mr. Trout, if you get to go out there, remember our airport is open on Tuesday through Saturday. So if you have a chance, you want to go out there and talk to him, please do so. I think you'll find him a very capable person to run our airport. And I look forward to many years of service from him in that particular endeavor. Also, we were, we applied for a grant to pay, not pay, put in a sidewalk in the holiday area. This, we turned that in, I don't know if we're going to get it or not, but it's called a multimodal grant. It's up to one billion dollars with a fifty thousand dollar match. And so if you can spend fifty thousand dollars and get nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a good deal. There's some mixed reviews about whether or not it needed in holiday, but I think it was worthwhile, and it was a project that was ongoing before I got here. So we've submitted that, we'll see how it goes. And if it does come in, I really do think it'll be an enhancement to the holiday area. So hopefully there'll be some good news that we can report to you later. I think that's everything that I had on my report for you tonight. I'll take any questions if you should have any. Well, if none, I want to thank you, as always, for doing such a fine job representing the county and the districts. Can you vote a good one?
Next is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions about those minutes or any amendments, corrections? Okay? If not, everybody vote, please.
Steven Stokes?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Number six is the report of the public utilities. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions about that report? If not, please vote.
Steven Stokes?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Sixteen yes. Motion carries.
Number seven is the approval of the quarterly report from the Tennessee Rehabilitation Center. The, number seven on the agenda.
Stand by for just one second.
Okay. No, we're waiting for Madam Ferguson to correct something.
Well, you know, they say that seven is the scariest of all numbers, because seven, eight, nine.
That's true.
So if you're going to skip one, that's the one to skip.
Okay, this is number seven, approval of the quarterly report.
Yes. Okay, now we have our motion and our second. Any questions about that report? If not, please vote on your tablet, please.
Steven Stokes?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Number eight is the resolution to adopt a redistricting plan for Benton County. Mayor Lash, Mayor Chairman has something that he would like to say about that.
One of the things that you will find there is that there's no change. We were very, very fortunate. I thought this was going to be a very messy endeavor, but because we came in in the parameters, the comptroller said that we did not have to change one thing. The redistricting committee met. It was agreed, we had participation from administrative elections, Mr. Beasley. And so all the parties that were there agreed that we would just leave things as they are. All the districts remain the same, the commissioner numbers remain the same, and so we just continue on. So we got very fortunate. I don't think in the next redistricting in ten years that we will be that lucky, but we'll leave that for the future generation to do.
Okay, we have our motion for that resolution by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any discussion about it or questions? If not, please vote.
Steven Stokes? Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Number nine is a resolution approving both Kenny Arnold and Tracy Hyatt to the Benton County Industrial Board for a four-year term effective October the eighteenth, 2021, and set to expire on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions about this one? Please vote.
Steven Stokes?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Terry, do you want to abstain?
Can you give us your reason for it, Steve?
It's not a conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest?
It's not.
I have to put, sorry, Terry.
If you abstain, we have to have a reason for it. We're going to.
Sorry. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries.
Next on the agenda was number ten, which was resolution number three, which has been pulled, and I'll let the mayor speak on that.
I spoke to Mayor Lashley about this. He was, he had some concerns about this particular one, and so I defer to him. I'm pulling the resolution, and it will continue as it is.
Number eleven. On the agenda is a resolution to rescind the outdated resolution number that was passed in the previous action by the legislative body on July twenty, twenty fifteen, that was setting a pay scale for the county employees, with exception of the sheriff's department and the highway department and the Benton County schools. We have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Frazier. Any questions about this resolution?
Yes, just what, what's the purpose of it?
We are looking to revisit the entire process, to have something prepared for you by way of the budget committee to replace this outdated one from 2015. Obviously, six, seven years is a long time to set a pay scale. So we are pulling that to make way for the new scale we hope that will be beneficial and productive for the county.
Any other questions about it? If not, please vote.
Steven Stokes?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Number twelve on your agenda is a resolution to budget insurance recovery funds received in the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars into the waste tire budget in order to construct a new fencing that was previously damaged. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions about this one? Okay, please vote.
I would show you what was recommended by both committees. Steven Stokes?
Yes.
And Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Number thirteen is a resolution to budget FEMA and insurance recovery funds in the total amount of thirty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty cents within the highway department budget. A motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hicks.
It was recommended by the highway department. Committee board.
It was recommended by both committees.
Recommended by both committees. Any questions? If not, please vote.
Steven Stokes?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Number fourteen is a resolution to budget revenues collected in the amount of eight hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-eight cents within the Benton County Airport budget in order to go towards the purchase of a new equipment truck. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions? Recommended by budget? No questions, please vote.
Steven Stokes?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Weal?
Oh, sorry.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Number fifteen is a resolution to budget funds collected from the county delinquent property tax sale in the total amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hicks.
Recommended by budget.
Any questions? It's recommended by budget. If there's no questions, take a vote, please.
Steven Stokes?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Number sixteen is a resolution to budget donations received in the amount of one thousand dollars within the Benton County Animal Shelter budget. Motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions about this one? Recommended by budget?
Recommended by law.
Recommended by law committee? There's no questions, everyone vote, please.
Steven Stokes?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Terry P. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Number seventeen is a resolution budgeting reimbursement funds from the federal ELC grant in the amount of three thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents within the school's budget. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson.
Recommended by budget.
Recommended by budget? Any questions? If not, everyone vote, please.
Steven Stokes?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Number eighteen is a resolution budgeting funds received from a transition school work grant in the amount of fifty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty cents within the school's budget.
Recommended by budget.
Motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Mr. Ferguson. Any questions about this one? If not, everyone please vote.
Steven Stokes?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Number nineteen. Resolution appropriating funds in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from the school's unassigned fund balance and budgeting within the proper expenditure account in order to cover the SIR three payroll. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Frazier.
Recommended by budget.
Any questions? This packet two-thirds vote to pass.
Steven Stokes?
I wish to abstain, I may have a complaint.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Anyone? Angie Town?
Abstaining, and I have conflict also with the school.
Anyone else wish to change their vote? Fourteen yes to abstain. Passes.
Number twenty. Resolution of appropriate. Resolution appropriating funds in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-one cents from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund and budget within the county mayor's budget in order to remit the funds to the Women's Resource Assistance Program. Motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hicks.
Recommended by budget.
Recommended by budget. Any questions? Discussion? These next several resolutions are two-thirds. So if there's no questions, everyone vote, please.
Steven Stouts.
Yes.
Dwight Fowler.
Yes.
Mike. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen, yes.
Number twenty-one. Resolution to appropriate the drug court fees collected through the previous fiscal year from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in the amount of four thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-two cents in order to remit the funds to the state of Tennessee.
Recommended by budget.
A motion by Commissioner Frazier and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any discussion or questions? Okay, if not, please vote.
Steven Stouts.
Yes.
Terry, Dwight Fowler.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen, yes.
Number twenty-two is a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of five hundred dollars from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to help cover the cost of the new fencing at the waste tire shed.
Recommended by budget.
Recommended by budget. Motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions or?
Is that just for the deductible?
Yes.
Yes.
And for what it's worth, that fence out there, that new gate is fantastic. You can load with one finger.
That doesn't need to be. You can use two hands and both feet.
We go out there now, yes.
Okay, everyone vote, please.
Steven Stouts.
Yes.
Dwight Fowler.
Yes.
Terry P. Sorry. Change their vote? Motion carries sixteen, yes.
Resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of seven hundred and twelve dollars and forty-two cents from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to help cover the cost of the purchase of a new equipment trailer for the Benton County Airport. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Frazier.
Recommended by budget.
Recommended by budget. Any questions or? Oh, Commissioner Hill.
Um, is this a separate equipment trailer from the one we just voted on a couple resolutions ago?
You voted on the one they were surplusing because it had been damaged beyond repair. So they scrapped that out and sold it, and now they're taking money that they.
To purchase a new one.
This is a new one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Steven Stouts.
Yes.
Dwight Fowler.
Yes.
Nick Miller. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen, yes.
A resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and eighty-one cents from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to cover the expense of purchasing new printers and scanners for the Election Commission Office. That's number twenty-four on the agenda. Any questions?
Recommended by budget.
Recommended by budget.
This is going to be turned in for Homeland Security Reimbursement.
Mr. Frazier, did you want to add anything?
No. But he didn't tell me how to do it either.
Okay. Yeah, ready to, everyone vote, please.
Steven Stouts.
Yes.
Dwight Fowler.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen, yes.
Number twenty-five is a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of forty-two thousand, three hundred dollars from the jail workhouse courthouse litigation tax reserve in order to pay the sheriff an impound lock fence. To pay for the sheriff and impound lock fence.
What is the total?
The total, as it is now, is forty-two thousand, three hundred. I'm asking someone to make a motion to amend it by three thousand and twenty-five dollars, bringing the new total to forty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Forty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'll make that motion when we end it.
We got it.
We got it.
Okay. We have an amendment by Commissioner Hopper.
Yep.
And a second by, who was the second?
Second was me, I thought that.
That's okay.
So.
We're, we're in a motion to amend.
Yes. This is the motion to amend.
Right, I was.
Okay, Mr. Hopper and Mr. Hicks, or Commissioner Hill?
I just want to know what the computer said, that's what I was.
Yeah. Which is fine.
Doesn't matter who did it.
No, as long as we got the amendment.
Right.
The computer put in that Rachel, Rochelle Hill was the motion. I did not see the second that the computer recorded it off, go back and look for all of it. I have put in the motion to amend the funds we changed from forty-two thousand, three hundred to forty-five thousand, three twenty-five. This is the motion to amend.
Okay, we have, Commissioner Plant, did you want to say something?
Is that the?
I'm sorry, Carol.
Fence to be put in, is that somebody contract meeting?
Yeah, we ran in the paper, and we had two bids submitted to the mayor's office. Uh, one came in at a little over fifty-four thousand dollars, and then this is the one that obviously we went with. It, by the way, it's the same company that did the work with the tire disposal plant. Um, I'm baffling, I think it's All-Star Fencing.
I know we did have somebody, but I don't know if they're doing fencing now or not.
Well, we'll apply, we'll take them on.
Okay, Commissioner Miller.
I'd like to say that we've already got some property with a fence around it. The whole Highway Department, they used it for twenty-five to thirty years without any problems. If it needs upgraded in security, I think we can do it cheaper than forty-five thousand dollars. Mr. Christopher already has some equipment down there, so it's, uh, I'd like to see us look into that before we spend forty-five thousand dollars for a fence around the jail.
Okay, Commissioner Hicks.
I would like to see the fence at the jailhouse, because if we move this thing to somewhere else in the county, you're going to have to hire another person to be a security guard over the thing. And that's going to be forty-five thousand dollars a year.
You could tie it.
What?
Go ahead.
And, and then, if we are going to do this fence, can we do it this time and not prolong it last time? Because that costs us twenty grand.
You could tie the security system.
If this is, if this is voted on tonight and passes, that man is going to be called tomorrow.
Thanks.
We're going to get this locked in and get it going.
Commissioner Miller.
You could tie the security system in down there to the tire on the jail. You don't have to hire anybody.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yeah, if we put it down at the Highway Department, we're going to have to put some kind of surveillance down there. This means cameras and all that stuff, so who knows where that cost is going to wind up.
This was recommended by budget.
You also have maintenance at the Highway Department. So that would have to be taken. This would mean, and, and, you know, your, your will is your will, and that's fine with me. But if you did go after the Highway Department, that would mean we would have to, um, secure the gate every time maintenance left. So, and, hey, that's what they're paid to do, is to take care of it. You will have that added time of them having to come out every time, slide the locks, secure it, and, and not forget it, because you'll have to that. Plus, it is still, regrettably, in a flood zone. So if you do have, uh, something out there, it could be damaged. That would be our responsibility to keep and take care of. Again, whatever your will is, it's fine with me. Those are just two points that have been brought up to me when other people had discussed the value. And it is an extraordinarily high value. But we're living in post-COVID times, folks. I, I, I'm sorry, inflation going out the roof now. You go try to buy a T-bone, it, 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 not that I buy a lot of T-bones, but I saw some steaks at Walmart, two or three steaks was over fifty dollars. So time, it's just high time. But again, this is not property taxes. This is not coming from those coffins. This is, uh, coming from the litigation tax that can only be spent on Sheriff's Department and courthouse improvements.
And he says he's going to pay it back, too.
He's going to pay it back.
That's what, that's what I was trying to ask her on that resolution.
Commissioner Plant.
He's going to do half and half. So can we put that in that resolution to the Sheriff's Department? Will they have, you know, back to the, to the, uh, the county?
I'll have it in, in Miami next week signed, I mean, next month signed by the Sheriff and I to take care of it for you. Is that satisfying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
We've all got one amendment on the floor now, so.
Yeah, but I didn't know how we need to handle that.
Mr. Miller.
I already talked to Greg down there. Electronic keypad with a gate is fine with him. He's the one, he's down there during the daytime. To address the flooding, river basins are already working to alleviate the flooding problem down there. As far as the fifty-fifty, that's fine. But instead of paying back to the fence, why don't we just put it in the general fund, half of what he collects? That's money back to the county.
Okay, any others? Uh, Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, um, when we do resolutions going forward on that, um, the resolution will list the amount of money taken in, the half that's going to the general fund, and the half that will go back to tow and services in the Sheriff's Department, so that it's clear what's coming in and that it is being split.
Commissioner Frazier.
Key, what Keith Frazier that has been overlooked is chain of custody. And when you take an impounded vehicle, you're responsible for the islands inside, and then the evidence, contamination, that people having access to the unsecured lot once inside the fence area. So when you got non-lawyers with people in the same holding area, it violates that chain of custody. I was for using the fence in the area at the Highway Garage, everybody knows that. But that is a very serious issue. And hopefully, we can use both lots in the future to secure both of these in expansion.
Any others? Okay, we're going to vote now, we're voting on the amendment. So, um, everyone please vote.
Steven Stouts.
Yes.
Dwight Fowler.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Got eighteen, yes, one, no. It passes. As amended.
Okay, the amendment passes. So now we're going to take a vote on the resolution as it was amended. Any questions?
Mr. Miller, you want to make another motion or amend it?
No.
Okay, you ready now? Okay, so now we're, we're voting on the resolution as we amended it.
Steven Stouts.
Yes.
Dwight Fowler.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Fourteen, yes, two, no.
Okay, so that resolution passed as we amended it. Number twenty-six is resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of twenty-four hundred and fifty dollars from the jail workhouse courthouse litigation tax reserve in order to pay for the ADA handicap accessible door at the courthouse entrance.
This is the courthouse entrance that is on that side, that is facing, um, well, the monuments, the memorial, the black hole. I'm, I'm bad with directions, but it's the one coming in and coming to the clerk's office and the.
That's on the south side.
That's, we're going to go with south side. It's on the south side.
Recommended by budget.
Recommended by property.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or?
I would like to say I'm glad to see you support the handicaps. It's something that, you know, even our staffs coming in, if you look at, we've had one incident we pursued over the missing them steps. Now somebody needs to really be cautious about to keep a courthouse up to the ordinance.
I agree.
Right, I wish the other side would also have a handicap door. Because you got a ramp from to come in and go to get, get over, I don't know what to do to get over.
Well, Mr. Plant, that's a very.
We can get a ramp.
And we were, we were trying to look at perhaps moving that handicap park there. It was confusing for people. And moving it to this side, to the south side, could expand the number of handicap parking on this side and keep that confusion down. Because people who come in in wheelchairs and walkers are left stranded, and it is very, it's awkward for them, they, they, it's awkward for everybody.
I said several times, I have to that way, I said, how did I get in there? You know, that's what he tells me.
That's another one of the things.
Rain, it can be a trouble.
It should have been done two years ago, but it ain't get done.
Yeah.
So, and also, you may notice when you leave tonight that the door's on the north side then. Does that pick up? I catch it. Doors on the north side, uh, one of them's got some new hardware put in. That's part of the remodeling of the doors. They're getting all new hardware to facilitate the ADA compliance there. So that's already being taken care of. You see, one of the doors have already been done tonight when you leave, and then we're getting the ADA later.
Okay, any other discussion about this? If not, um, please vote.
Steven Stouts.
Yes.
Dwight Fowler.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen, yes.
If you just do something for us, we'll go ahead and change it.
Mr. Hopper, I think I'm going to move you up to the front and let you sit up here, how about that?
But when I was, um, saying, he, he just heard you.
Oh, he heard that, didn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah, he heard that.
Maybe, maybe it's paying attention to that.
Selective hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, next is, uh, on the agenda is the Department of our Notaries. We have three. Lisa Autry, Michelle Antoniak, Pierpont. No, we have two, I'm sorry. A motion to approve the notaries is by Commissioner Hicks and second. I missed it, she flipped it over. Commissioner?
Frazier.
Frazier. Everyone vote, please.
Steven Stouts.
Yes.
Dwight Fowler.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen, yes.
Next is any other business? Do we have anybody?
I would like to say one time, I'm on my way to talk about handicap stuff in Rockville. I know we're not the part that actually runs that position, but we have a lot of part of being part of it. I would like to say to any buses that are in town, or anyone, to everybody who lives, we should, uh, put air conditioners on our buses. I own two buses myself in town. And I'm just saying, these kids these days, modern times, they get on, and they, they hot, they roll running down, it raining. I think we deserve the kids to have air conditioning on buses when it's ninety-eight to a hundred degrees, a hundred, ten degrees on the buses. With modern times, especially the handicap. But they've got those, one of the things, I don't know if we're being addressed tomorrow, but I just want to verify everybody's mind if they're any part of that or any of that. Thank you about that.
Especially in buses, our air conditioning.
That's true. At one time, what, I've had issues one time. But anyway, even the county buses, it's not that big of a thing to do. We should have air conditioned buses for kids.
Right. Help for the drivers, too.
And you know, as early as I could, you had ride that thing.
I've driven a bus before, I know it's hot. Any, any other business? Mayor, you got anything to say?
Great meeting.
Okay.
Hope to see you November five p.m. now.
Hey, don't, don't cut your cameras off yet. Hey, don't, don't cut your cameras off yet. Remember, November is five o'clock if you want to come in. Okay. We made a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Everybody vote on your tab, please.
Does this say as a man or?
Dwayne Fowler.
I can't vote.
Scott, Travis here.
Oh.
All say no for John. Any no's?
I thought we were supposed to vote. Oh. Okay. Okay.